We should have.
I'd like to call the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four Dixon County Planning Commission meeting order. Uh, Mr. Qualls, would you please a kindness give devotion, sir?
All right, Mr. Chair.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Darnay, would you call Rome?
Todd Berry. Tina Ferris.
Here.
Darren Green.
Here.
Todd Lindsey.
Here.
Robert Qualls.
Here.
Tommy Brown.
Here.
Jeff Chase.
Here.
Shane Chandler.
Here.
Gary Peeler. Christie Sullivan.
Patrick Regan.
Here.
Mitchell Harden.
Here.
We're doing a coin.
All right. Thank you. Seems like these mics are pretty sensitive today. Uh, this time I'd like to recognize all of the visitors in the crowd, and if you have not signed in, please do so up at on the corner as you exit. We'll move into approval of the minutes. Has everybody looked over last month's minutes?
Chairman, I move approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Have a motion by Robert Qualls to approve the minutes as they stand. Have a second by Tommy Brown. Any further comment? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Oh, do we have any public comments? Anybody wish to? Nobody signed up? Okay. We'll now move into the items. Item number one is site plat for Byron Anderson, I forty mobile truck repair and towing, tax map one thirty-nine parcel thirty point ten, eight point one one acres, highway forty-eight south Dixon, Tennessee. C two general commercial, second district.
Okay, this site plan first come to the planning commission in May of two thousand eighteen, and it was approved. Uh, originally, when you look at it, this was an old mobile home park. You can kind of still see remnants of it. Um, since this site plan is more than twenty-four months old, it become known void, so it's come back with it. Uh, you know, that period of time, a lot has happened. We had COVID, a lot of things, but now they're ready to start, you know, to pursue the project once again. Uh, you'll notice included in your packet was a, um, a statement from the state approving the driveway. Uh, you'll see it's quite a process. It takes several months. Had to go through seven departments. We actually have a copy here of what it actually will be. It is quite, it's quite hard now to get approval from the state, but they do have that already. You also notice they're gonna put up an eight-foot, uh, chain link fence around the property with private, uh, mesh around the front facing the road. Uh, they will be required to have B two landscaping buffer. Uh, the back area where they're gonna park the vehicles will be gravel, and they decided not to put, uh, white poles because there are A one residential properties around it, and they thought this may be something to, you know, keep it less of a distraction from the neighbors. I know Brian has some comments.
I'll just give the, well, you already gave the history too, so, uh, that it was conditionally approved uh, previously. Uh, so the site plan for the Anderson property, I forty mobile truck repair and towing was reviewed using zoning resolution of Dixon County, Tennessee. That review yielded the following comments. Uh, additional clarification is needed regarding the use. Uh, what is the range of time that cars will be kept in the vehicle storage area? What is the range of conditions for the vehicles that will be in the vehicle storage area? Uh, answers, answers to these questions may change characterization of use, which may impact requirements. Uh, number two, the paved entrance into the site shows a fifty-foot width. Section three point zero nine zero access control states that a point of access onto a street should not exceed thirty feet in width. One of the concerns at the June two thousand eighteen planning commission meeting was whether the proposed access for the initially submitted twenty eighteen site plan was sufficient, given the anticipated type of vehicle traffic such as wreckers towing automobiles and, uh,
The state is, you know, this is what the state requires, and that, you know, there's a copy there if anybody wants to see it, and that's what they will approve.
So in, in this instance, I believe they're looking for a hundred twenty feet. Is that correct?
Actually, where it comes out to the road because you're pulling big vehicles, they didn't require turn lane. It will actually be a hundred and twenty foot and fantail in at the road. Yes.
Uh, number three, what is the proposed means for trash removal, looking to confirm that no dumpsters planned and an appropriate plan for trash removals in place? Uh, number four, uh, what percentage of the site is landscaped? Section three point one one zero C requires that fifteen percent of the site be landscaped. Uh, number five, the site plan shows more than ten parking spaces, so landscaping equal to or greater than ten percent of the there, the total area parking area is required. Uh, this landscaped area may be internally located and or at the periphery of the parking area. That's from section three point one one zero D. Uh, please provide a landscaping plan. Uh, that requirement is in three point one two zero A sixteen. And, uh, believe we might have addressed this already. Will any external lighting be provided other than the wall stone lights? Uh, number eight, uh, parking requirement requires discussion. The parking area, parking requirement for a roadside service facility is one space for each fourteen hundred square feet of lot area. For, uh, the greater than eight acre lot, this would be more than two hundred and fifty parking spots. This would appear to be unnecessary and practical and detrimental. Um, number nine, please provide dimensions of parking spaces. Section four point zero one five B requires a, a minimum, uh, ten foot by twenty foot parking area per space. And it sounds like number ten has been addressed as well. Where will records be parked and how many are planned for use? Sounds like they'll be in the back. Uh, number eleven, how many employees will typically be on site during business hours? And this just helps to understand that the parking requirement. Uh, number twelve, will the existing gravel drive be used to access the vehicle storage area? Uh, number thirteen, uh, what is the total amount of impervious surface? If it is more than twenty thousand square feet, the stormwater drainage plan is required, and that's per section four point two one zero A. If more than twenty thousand square feet, uh, an erosion control plan is also required. And again, and that is section four point two one zero D. And, uh, last item, uh, what is the proposed surface for the vehicle storage area? And that's the end of the comments.
Um, I have a couple of questions. Uh, do we know is this gonna be twenty-four hour operation?
We do run twenty-four hours, but the lot won't be open twenty-four hours.
Okay, any concerns with the noise ordinance around there?
We've not had anybody at all say anything.
Okay. And then he touched on the lighting, and so that was my other question.
Yes, Mr. Chase.
Um, I don't know if it has been addressed or not yet. Uh, two things. Um, you've mentioned parking ten by twenty, but we're talking trucks.
Well, the, he's talking about the spots up front. They are ten by twenty is your standard parking for a car.
Okay, all right. Um, is there, has there been a provision made for, you said the back is gonna be gravel storage, correct?
Yes.
How are you planning to collect, because trucks leak gas, oil, transmission fluid, and everything else? We don't want that going into the ground. How, what is the plan to collect whatever leaks back there?
When we have something that leaks like that, we have pig mats, uh, recovery systems to take care of that, uh, so that's not an issue.
Would you explain that a little bit? You said mats?
It's called pig mats. You got pig mats who suck up the oil. Uh, you got, uh, a suction system that it's got the busted oil pan or whatever. We can suck all the oil out of it, all the fuel out of it, whatever it takes. If it's leaking, then we, we recover that, and it's not a, or have it, actually have it recovered, and it's not an issue.
I tell you, it'd be the same thing you do on site at a wreck site or something like that.
Most of the time, I stick care of before he gets it back there. They can do that on the side of the road to keep it from being there.
Because that would be my only concern. I mean, that, you know, there's a leaking gas or something else. That's gonna get washed into wherever the, the, uh, you know, the drainage is gonna.
And again, uh, obviously, there's a time or two when you get something that will drip or something here or there, but it's a thing called a pig mat that you can just put right up under it, and it soaks up anything that comes out of it.
Jeff, if it makes you feel any better, I've worked at about ten years of facility, use those pig mats all over the facility, every work, every time there was an oil leak, and they, I mean, it's amazing. They've got ones that absorb water, not oil, ones that absorb oil and not water, ones that absorb oil and water. If he, if they're used properly, and I have no reason to think that they wouldn't be, that will stop what would otherwise be the problem that would occur that we're talking about.
A lot like this is, uh, got the potential of a, uh, fuel or oil hazard. Does the state come and?
They'll be, they, they'll have a, uh, recovery company like, uh, we use a place called Premier that comes and does it, but they'll come and recover it, and it's ninety-nine percent of it's done at the wreck site or wherever. Uh, they, you very seldom get something there that you have an issue with. Uh, and like I said, it's, it's my property. I don't want it messed up either, so I'm, I'm, we use pig mats now, then that'll continue when we move there.
So just a tow-in and recovery lot, not a wrecking lot?
No, no.
Any further questions?
Well, it's obvious that that parking requirement anticipates a retail type business, which this is not. Is that something? Do we have to make, do we have to waive that for this to happen? I mean, if we do, I would, given the nature, his, his business, I would certainly be agreeable to doing that if we actually need to formally do it.
I hadn't checked that on this one, but seems like that, uh, didn't we put a provision in there for like heavy equipment and all? It didn't have to be a.
Maybe, because this is, this is the exact one that was approved last time, and that very well could have been.
And it was, the parking spots were based upon occupant load?
Yes.
So, I don't.
You're not gonna have many customers coming.
You're not gonna have, yeah.
Yeah, because of, yeah.
Yeah, I think we, I may be wrong, but I thought we put a provision in there, so like if you had heavy equipment or something, it wouldn't just eat the asphalt up.
I, I think that's because we, this has come up before with this businesses of this nature, and how they just don't have a parking requirement equivalent of the acreage compared to a retail business or even, even other businesses of a different nature. This, this is something that requires the extensive amount of space and very little parking in comparison to that extensive amount of space that you need.
And that's why your back lots gravel, because you got these big, heavy trucks coming in, turning equipment, whatever, you would tear the pavement up. Yes.
Um, I, is it Brian? Yes. So with your twelve comments that you have, do you have any concerns with moving forward with this, or do you need those answers?
Well, I think a lot of the answers are coming forward. Um, let me just review them real quick again. I, I think one of the questions is regarding, uh, uh, meeting the landscaping requirements. Uh, so just, and I think this is, you know, so you see a large extensive landscape buffer around the site. Then that's gonna cover a pretty good amount of the site. The question is, you know, does it actually hit that fifteen percent mark? Um, and then you do also have more than ten spots, so there is a requirement for landscaping, um, around that, that parking area. So, um, I think some of the other concerns as far as clarification on, on the use and so have been addressed here.
I have one more question about, did you wanna?
Oh, no, go ahead. Sorry.
Um, regarding parking, that's a good point. Obviously, you don't need as much parking with this kind of business. That's, that's simple. What happens if truck repair goes away? And somebody says, you know, I'll return that little building into a shop or whatever else. Where are we on parking at that point? If it, another use.
It would have to come back. You've been in business for how many years?
Uh, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. So, yeah, this is an existing business.
If it was a different business that came in.
You'd have to have a new site plan.
Okay.
Same as you would if it was an existing place, and they wanted to expand or build on, they would have to add more parking.
I don't know if you've ever been to his website or whatever. It kind of gives you an idea of what they do, and they, you know, they've been in the county a long time and do, do all, especially a lot of stuff on the interstate. Yes, yeah.
Have there been, uh, any changes or updates since the landscaping buffer was approved originally, two thousand eighteen to now?
No, it's in the works, but at this point, no.
Right.
This isn't gonna require him to have some sort of island in the big open space. He needs this landscape to make this happen, is it? I would hate to impose that on a business of his nature, because it'd be so counterproductive.
Right, it's gonna set back off the road.
Yeah, it's got a great, it's got a great setback distance, and it's so much better use of that land than the previous use as far as I'm concerned. So I wanna, I wanna try to help make this happen, is try to try to help keeping it from happening.
Yeah. And you know, what you do have, what's the same site plan that was approved back before?
All right, well, I, I'll make a motion to pass it with the comments of the staff.
The recommendations of the staff. Okay, have a proper motion by Tina Ferris to approve with staff comments and a proper second for Todd Lindsey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move into other business. Number one, amendment to Article three, section three point one one zero landscaping and buffer requirements. Um, do we want to do these one at a time?
If you remember back in January, it originally come through, and it went to the, oh, public hearing at county commission level that decided, needed to actually make some clarifications in addition to that, and what you have now is kind of broke down. We've got now the definition of what native plants are. Uh, you've got the new body of what will be put in there and replaced with, and you also have appendix one, appendix two, which list specifically what, you know, plants are native and what are not. I think it'd be best to do them separate.
Mr. Chairman, that's what I was gonna say. Thank you. Is this their each a different amendment to take them up separately?
Okay, so we'll, we'll, uh, address one A, amend Article two, section two point zero two zero definitions.
And you should have a copy of the definition that's gonna be used. Yes. If you want, I can read it to you. Uh, it says natives are plants that evolved in place over geologic time and are distributed across the landscape largely in response to climatic episodes and adapt, and adaptation to site conditions related to land formations specifically. They are natural elements of a regional landscape.
Do we need a motion to approve?
Yes.
My second.
Oh, who said that? I have a, uh, motion by Mitchell and a second by Christie to approve amendment one A. That's the amend Article two, section.
Change. I think it was second of Tina.
Tina, oh, I'm sorry. Second of a Tina. Or the ladies voice.
Make sure we get the record, Russ.
Uh, that's amend Article two, section two point zero two, the definitions.
Yes, the definition.
Any further discussion? With proper motion, all those in favor of, of amending Article two, section two point zero two O. State aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. We'll now move into one B, amend zoning resolution to appeal appendix one, approve native plants.
And this you have, it's a pretty extensive list of the plants that are approved for as native plants of Tennessee.
Do we, do we have a source in this one? See a source?
Of, uh, that habitat in West Tennessee, PDF, was that the source?
No, that was the, uh, that was the definition. Do you know where she got all these from?
I don't recall off the top of my head. I know these are commonly used in geographic regions, but I don't have the exact source. And just first of all.
Question. It would be not, because it would really complicate matters now, but are there pictures that go with this list? By any chance, for those of us that don't remember.
You would probably have to look online would be my guess. I mean, if you were to Google this name, I'm sure.
Well, I, yeah, I was thinking there, you know, but there's like seven hundred.
Right, yes, there is.
So, but is there any lists, are there any source of pictures that goes with this list someplace?
It would not be part of the zoning.
Okay, all right, just curious.
What, uh, just for the sake of folks to clear it up, what, what changed in this versus what the existing rigs?
Well, none of this stuff was in.
There's nothing about the plant.
In January, we had the body come in, but we didn't have the definition in, in these, you know, which told you exactly what was a native plant, what wasn't.
This has a level of specificity, Mr. Chairman, that it's, it's sort of undeniable. These, these terms are terms of art with strict definitions, and it pretty much, if that's what you go by, then it's gotta be those plants and nothing else.
And I'll just add, this, this appendix one, uh, of the native plants is very thick.
Yes, yes.
And just, just, just for comparison, if you look at appendix two, page and a half of what are considered invasive, so a lot of plants are allowed, a few are no goes. I'm sure there's someone that didn't make it into both these categories, but, uh, it, it leaves you as a basis for when a landscape plan comes in to after a thorough review. Um, and obviously, as you see often, this needs to be tweaked in the future.
Do we have an Arbor Stone file to distinguish?
Why?
You show me a fern and a whatever they're saying there, and I couldn't pick them apart.
I couldn't either.
So I'm just wondering how we're gonna police this.
I, I think the chairman's point is that I don't think any of us are botanists. I certainly for want of not.
Yeah. I said arborist, but it's botanist. I was talking trees, he's talking plants. I was, that's how much I know about it.
When they bring a plant, plant in, they have these on there, we're pretty much gonna have to take their word. This is what they're putting on there, because you're right, none of us, you, you look at it seven hundred, nobody knows.
It, it's gonna be the same as you, you see with a site plan. They say they're gonna do something. Obviously, enforcement becomes an issue out of the fact that we can certainly discover, but they have to label which plant they're gonna use. Because they have to bring in a landscaping, they're gonna say, where he uses, like, these eight different plants, and folks on the list is check, you know, it's just a, it's a checking mechanism and making sure that they are really not planting anything in the invasive.
That's what I was gonna say. I think the intent of this is to make sure that this is well called out. This is.
Yes. But can I look at one of these and tell what it is? No, I have no idea.
And if something goes awry, we could, the rest of the work's been on a D B basis. I look at it, and I see that previous owner of my place was really in love with a lot of the invasive plants. I got five or six of them just off the top of my head.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's quite common. You'll notice that, yes.
Well, then, you know, you go buy a bag of grass seed, you expect it to be grass, and you don't know what's gonna come up.
And there was actually a story on the news the other day. They've actually, in the invasion, they actually have included the Bradford pear.
Yeah.
And you see them everywhere.
God, I've got several of those in my, yeah. Not, not what I do, they're certainly, they are invasive.
So if we, well, we haven't got there yet. So we do have the proper motion and proper second, I believe, is it?
Do we? No, no. Not for this section.
Okay. We, we need a second.
It is motion.
A motion to approve. A motion by Mitchell, and a second by Jeff Chase. And I've already gotten lost. We're C?
One B.
One B.
Yeah.
Amend the zoning resolution to add appendix one, approval of native plants. So do have a proper motion and a proper second. Any further discussion on this? State aye.
Aye.
Aha, opposed? Okay, that passes. Now we'll move in to one C, which is amend the zoning resolution to add the appendix two prohibited invasive plants.
And this is your other page, which list is a whole lot smaller than the other ones.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just because we're on this topic, uh, the regulations that were already passed, when you do landscaping buffer plan, fifty percent have to be native. Can't have any invasive. There could be others that aren't on the, I heard these, but you have to do fifty percent native, so that, I think that helps how you building that pie. It's, the path has to be native, and that's that. The rest of me, whatever, they not be native, as long as it's not invasive.
Well, with the, with the list that big, I mean, you're, you're gonna. But with the list that big, I mean, you're, you're gonna be, yeah.
It'd be nice if they did. I'm not appreciative, but the requirement is to be.
So at no point can, if we approve this, at no point can any of these prohibited plants be planted in Dixon County?
They happen to fly in the wind and they catch root, you know, that's something else, but it can't be in the plan. It can't be a listed plant that we're gonna plant this and they can't.
Okay, so if it just appears and nobody per se knows how it got there, we're not gonna penalize.
Can't be in the plan and you're not supposed to be planting it. Please. Quite pleased.
By its very nature, invasive plants are invasive and they're gonna show up where they're not wanted. But, you know, we don't want anybody out there deliberately planting them. So Mr. Chairman, I, I think this is a good list of things that people should try to avoid. And I move that we adopt this uh, appendix of prohibited plants as uh, appendix to the zoning regulation.
Yeah, I just like these mimosa trees and Japanese hollies. I mean, they just, they're out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. A lot of stuff on this list is everywhere.
And, and they just, you know, nobody's ever claimed to have planted them, but they, they're there. Somebody did.
Okay, Brian, do a recite both floors. Hey, before I have gotten there yet.
Can we add Bermuda grass in there?
Kudzu is not on here.
We don't wanna talk about kudzu. Okay, so we do.
We did a second.
Uh, thought Jeff, Jeff, Jeff said.
Chris, but I'll be second.
Okay. You.
My motion Jeff said.
Okay, that'll work. Have a motion and a second, a motion by Robert Pauls and second by Jeff Chase. All those in favor of one C to amend the zoning resolution to add the appendix two prohibited invasive plants, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we'll move into the item number two of other businesses, R three residential district revisions, third edition.
This is the third time around. Um, you will see, uh, there's a section that was highlighted that will, that was added for major subdivisions. It reads the foregoing notwithstanding, planning commission may approve a major subdivision of twenty-five lots or more with only one access point if A, public road providing access to the major subdivision is a state highway and the Tennessee Department of Transportation, TDOT, will only grant approval for one access point from the state highway into the major subdivision. Or B, the planning commission determines, based on its review of the traffic study, if applicable, that one access point into the major subdivision is sufficient.
So that's, that's basically what's changed out of it?
Yes, that is the only change of, yes.
And, and Mr. Chairman, this time the county commission sent down the language for review, not just a rejection.
So this should.
We take them out for uh, consideration, which is by.
Yes.
And that you would have recommended on favorably or unfavorably on to give some an idea for the amendment. You can do that as well. That's the main purpose of favorable or unfavorable consideration back to.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a real problem with this in that I know that I don't see a lot of circumstances where I'm gonna be very favorable to a major subdivision of twenty-five lots with one access point, but I guess we don't, we don't have to bind our successors if they think in twenty fifty-three that, yeah, forty lot subdivision, one way in and out's just fine. Well, I, I don't see continuing to bump heads with them over something as minor as that.
I agree with you, Mr. Qualls, and I, I kinda agree with a couple of points. A, being a state road, we really don't have any say so. And B, our newest school in the county has several hundred children with one access and exit point, and we approved that to happen.
And as well, the state said that's what you're gonna, and the state said that's what was happening. Yeah, the state driveways and everything, they've gotten really strict and you pretty much do what they say or you don't do it.
And that's right. That's just how it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we can make a recommendation, but we can't tell the state what to do.
That's exactly right.
But I believe with that, is anybody, if. I have a motion by Christie Sylvan to approve item number two, the R three residential district revisions, and I will second that one. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Anybody else have anything this evening? If not, the next scheduled meeting will be Thursday, May the ninth, twenty twenty-fourth.